Addison, if you please.
Precious and heavenly Father, come to you today to ask for guidance uh wisdom as we conduct this business meeting. And we asked you allow us to stay open minded and keep the best interest of the town of Silver City at the forefront of our decisions.
Bill Johnson, I pledge. Mr. Bowe, if you will lead us in the mission statement.
Town of Silver City Mission Statement, to advance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Mr. Brown, if you will lead us in the vision statement.
Silver City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community. Where both innovation and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you, Bowe. Are there adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor, you have the amended agenda, which is on your table. With you, and that includes, we amended it, section six point eight under new business. To include one on one, East Raleigh Street, Schedule O.
Second.
Second, that the agenda be approved with the modification all in favor by sign of my. All of those are the same line, hearing none, motion carried.
Motion to approve the consumer agenda.
It's been moved upon a second that the consumer agenda be approved. All in favor, let it be known by sign of my. All of those have the same right, hearing none, Senator.
Now we just need to open, we can open the public hearing after uh I go over the packet contents. Or we can go over the packet contents and open the public hearing. There's no one signed up for public.
Okay. Alright, go ahead and go over the uh contents.
So if you'll look at page twelve and thirteen of your packets. The town of Silver City received a voluntary non-contiguous annexation petition located at the CAM site for GGT Enterprises Project ICE. The timeline is below. On May tenth, the voluntary annexation petition was received by the town of Silver City. And May sixteenth twenty four, the Board of Commissions approved resolution directing the town clerk to investigate the subject position petition and offer a finding of sufficiency. At the May twentieth meeting, the town board reviewed the findings of sufficiency and approved the resolution to advertise and set a public hearing for June seventeenth twenty four, which is tonight. Once adopted, if you guys um approve the annexation ordinance, we will extend the corporate limits of the town of Silver City, North Carolina, to include the additional four parcels located at the CAM site. And you've already been given the information and the maps and um the clerk's findings were favorable.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns?
Did you hear, I was suggesting opening a public hearing to the I mean, someone, someone could have come in after the.
Yes, and now you can open the public.
Then uh we need to start a public hearing, open, discuss this matter. I'm getting a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Been moved upon a second, I'm probably hearing me to close all, let it be known by sign of my. All in favor. All disagree, let uh have the same right, hearing none, motion carried. Alright.
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to approve the annexation ordinance number twenty twenty four A one to extend the corporate limits to town of Silver City, North Carolina, effective June seventeenth.
Second.
It's been moved upon a second that the uh annexation take place all in favor by sign of my. Close at the same mic, hearing none, motion carried. Open the five point one Hampton Village LLC annexation.
Okay. So during an earlier meeting, the town board directed the town clerk to review the subject petition and offer findings of sufficiency. The following memorandum is the findings document executed by town clerk for your review. This is for voluntary annex and annexation petition contiguous requests for Hampton Village. As the finding of the town clerk is non-favorable, as noted in the following document, the town board may elect to schedule a public hearing to receive public comment and take action on the subject petition. Also, you will find attached to this memorandum a staff overview per department, function of town operations, identifying known or forecasted implications of the proposed petition, if granted. This is a representation of the larger packet of information that the board will receive if a public hearing is granted. So I can kind of go over the different impacts. So if you'll look on page seventeen, the finance department impacts, that would be the tax revenue we would receive at fifty four cent per one hundred dollars. Currently, um we don't, we don't get anything because they're outside of town limit, that's right. So this would be we would possible tax income of seven thousand one eighty ninety seven. Then the personal property tax would be on the mobile homes, a revenue of eighteen thousand two oh seven fifty three. And then the finance director and I, we said probably an average of two hundred and nineteen vehicles owned at Hampton Village, and automobile of five dollars each, that would be a thousand and ninety five dollars. And then automobile tax, assuming two hundred and nineteen vehicles valued at eight thousand each, would be twelve thousand two sixty seven fifty three. Then we would have a loss of fire revenue at twelve cents per one hundred dollars, tax value of five thousand six hundred and forty one dollars and eighty nine cents. So the total tax revenue to the town would be thirty three thousand one oh nine fourteen. The planning department impacts, we didn't see any additional impacts uh because we already there in our ETJ, so we already handled code enforcement. Sorry, I skipped over fire um fire department. They're already in our central fire district, so there's no additional impacts. So if you move on down to the police department impacts, you would, you'll note that this annexation would have a major impact on the police department. The chief of police Brian Reagan was able to gather the last four years of call data from Chatham County Sheriff's Office, and the data determined an average of a hundred and fifty calls per year at an average time of thirty five minutes per call. Those calls range anywhere from domestic violence calls, Brian.
Yes, all in the gamut from all of them, complaints, domestic violence, shot fired suspicious, one person. It's, it's all over. It would impact patrol investigations on domestic violence advocate. It would have an impact all the way through the police department.
So we were, we were able to determine that the minimum cost to the town uh with the extra officers and detectives require a minimum would be for just one officer in a car, a hundred and twenty five thousand. So that was the cost that really tipped it and made it unfavorable. Parks and Recreation impacts, um let's see. I'm trying to think, Tyler's not here. But I think out of town, these may be a little more expensive for the ETJ, but I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. But the financial impact from the parks and red would not be that large because Hampton Village is right beside a great park. And public works impacts, this is another one. Uh the positives where the water and sewer already exists, streets are up to specification. Negatives, more streets to clear during inclement weather, more leaf, limb, and white goods to collect, increased amount of garbage carts, increased number of streets to pay, streets have speed bumps, and they would have to be removed. Street lights become town's responsibility, so that's another financial impact that we did not include because we just don't know um the cost of that. Less revenue from water and sewer. So right now, the average water and sewer revenue from Hampton Village is averages one hundred and fifty dollars per household. So that's twenty two thousand five hundred a month, a monthly revenue. If annex Hampton Village would pay half of the water and sewer rate, and new monthly average would be eleven thousand two hundred and fifty. So we would approximately yearly revenue loss will be a hundred and thirty five thousand. So you can continue flipping, and that's all the different addresses that would be annexed. And finally, on page twenty three, you can see the breakdown. And the final line, the impact to the town of Silver City revenue and new expenses, negative two hundred and sixty five thousand six forty one eighty nine.
Great, thank you. See any questions are uh or uh top.
What would do, what would happen if we took no action?
It would just if there's not a motion to set a public hearing, we ask for lack of motion.
Okay, so you don't want a motion for both hearings?
I have a question.
Yes, Sam.
So I was just wondering, is Alum Estates, are they in the same situation? They're out in the ETJ, or how are they?
They're Chris. They are, okay, yes, they are.
In city limits, but Hampton Village is not.
Yeah, and I believe that's the one Chris told me that this is a tree line separating them.
Right, okay, okay. I was just wondering where, where they, where they were, because they're in the same area, it's just one is over to the right.
Okay, I was adding it in a totally different manner. They actually came through the woods.
William, did I understand you correctly? If we make no motion, it does.
That's correct. That's what happened. I believe to this.
Same thing in twenty sixteen.
What's the benefit of making no motion versus?
No motion, as you just say, it does, and um we've been sold the negative impact that will have.
Right, I mean, what's the difference between voting no and not voting at all?
Well, the public hearing.
Because the motion will be to set the public hearing, that's the next step. You could set the public hearing. That doesn't obligate you to approve it, but it seems if you're there's not a strong will among the board, desire, appetite, there's not, makes no sense to have the public hearing.
Yes.
Speaking of, why are you taking them at speed bumps?
Because they become city roads. And you have to take the speed bumps out for all different reasons, like um the fire department, police department, and different things like that. And Chris, whatever, some of the other reasons. And again, there is streetlights, um streetlights out there as well that would become the property of the town or the town's responsibility, and we're not sure that would be an additional financial impact as well.
Is someone in the same property in the room? Oh, that speaks volume in itself. I'm not ready to hand that we take no action. And I need to hear from the rest of the board.
I will do.
I agree. I make a motion that the board takes no action concerning the voluntary annexation petition request for Hampton Village.
That's fine.
They moved upon the second, all in favor by sign of my. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Alright, moving on to new business. Six point one, Jack.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit of history here, the Mount Air Farms asked for the East Third Street to be relocated. Couple years ago, they moved through that application of uh putting construction drawings together when we were doing the reviews, we realized there were some streets that need to be renamed. And they have suggested that the the segment, when you draw on your uh in your packet, it's called petition number three, this is the short segment, it would be on the east side of the plan. Kind of goes around what we formerly called Tank, it would come as an Exxon gas station. So it's just that little section that connects back to sixty four, the light. And uh the suggested name that um Mount Air sent to the county for approval, they got that uh initial approval, it's called Killwood Drive. And so re- renaming roads is something the town board would approve for us. And so that night, that's what we're looking for is to uh approve the petition to name, rename that section, Killwood Drive.
How many, how far would that go? Because would it go the entire, you know, we, it was voted to to close part of that vote. So you go from the beginning and the closure at the end of the.
So this would just be from the stoplight at sixty four. Go past, you know, Tank comes on your right, and when you get to uh, I guess, the backside of the oil change location, that one, that street's going to close at. So it would just be from that, just, just pass the uh oil change business. The stoplight is going to be called Killwood Drive.
So why not do the whole thing up to the end where they were?
That'd be, that would continue to be Third Street. So thi- this is only this section that they're renaming.
Okay, I'm still, I'm.
So right now it's Third Street. Right, and so it's going, Third Street's going to be closed, and it's going to close at that point right behind the oil change business. There could be a corner side there. Like there in that closure.
That's what I was, I thought, I thought possibly the closure would be.
There's closures on both sides.
But I, but I was thinking it was, the closure was further toward town.
So you have an east closure, which is the one we're talking about, and a west closure's on the other side here, there were laundry.
Now, are there still plans where they were going to reroute that? Where the um they were going to have a road reroute the traffic?
Yes.
That's the plans that's in the drawing?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, we're getting a motion.
Make the motion to approve petition three, to rename Killwood Drive.
Second.
It's been moved upon a second that we um renamed that little short section, Killwood Drive, all in favor by sign of my. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carries. Alright, ABC Board appointment six point two.
So we have several appointments tonight. So the first one's the ABC Board. So on the thirtieth of twenty four, Otis Martin's second term on the Silver City ABC Board will expire. Martin is not eligible to serve another appointment at this time. The Silver City ABC Board shall consist of three members appointed by the mayor with the approval of the majority of the board commissioners for three year staggered terms. The Silver City ABC Board will have a vacancy for one with no residential requirements as of July first twenty four. The following individuals have shown interest in serving, Butch Hudson of one oh eight Hudson Road, Silver City, North Carolina. Butch served on the planning board for Jack fourteen years, fourteen years, so. So the only um what you can do is tonight, you can appoint Butch Hudson to the board, or you can um not appoint anyone, and you can elect to advertise the position.
I'll make a motion to appoint who was turned out to Silver City ABC Board, but expiration date of June thirty fifth, twenty twenty seven.
Second, if Butch Hudson be appointed to the ABC Board, all in favor, let it be known by sign of my. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carries. Is there another vacancy on that board?
Yeah, the ABC Board only consists of three members. You're welcome, and that one is set by state statute. Okay, the next one is the Downtown Advisory Committee appointment. And the Downtown Advisory Committee has a vacancy for two members with no residential requirements. The committee is for those who are vested in interest in the future of downtown Silver City or who have knowledge, skills, or abilities that serve the interest and intent of the purpose of developing a viable framework to enhance further revitalization and development of downtown, utilizing existing and emerging strengths of the vital central commercial hub of the Silver City community. The Downtown Advisory Committee is composed of five members from within and around the Silver City community. Currently, we have two vacancies, and we have had four individuals who have shown interest in serving. We have Megan Smith of one, she owns a business, First Impressions Hair Salon at one twenty one East Raleigh Street. Elizabeth Mooney, who is with Mount Air Farms, Jamie Wilson, who also works with Megan Smith at First Impressions Hair Salon, and Edwin Arzuega of one thirty one South Birch Avenue. He is the owner of Winget Real Estate Group. So tonight, you will appoint two members out of your list of four to serve.
I make a motion.
That's confusing. When we appoint people, normally we, we've had applications in the past. Why don't we have applications presented with references and things like that? Because we don't really know these people well.
Um, I just didn't, we put them in the packet this time.
We had made some approvals a couple months ago where we, we could actually follow up and call references that they list on application.
And I can tell you that Edwin yeah, Edwin and Elizabeth Mooney have both um did the intro to local government course.
He said, uh Elizabeth we, when discussing this amongst ourselves, uh and getting this prepared, we looked at that class. And those that achieved and advanced that class, and that would be Edwin Argento and Elizabeth uh Liz.
We'll go with that.
I, I'd like to say something. Megan Smith, I know her personally, and um she is a graduate from George Mathews High School, so she's vested in Silver City. She's uh doesn't live, she lives in Randolph County now, I think, I'm not sure. But she has a lot vested here. And um whether she's taking the course or not, I'm sure she would be willing to do so. I would like I would like to see her considered to be on this uh Downtown Advisory Board. When looking at it, I'm thinking in the perspective of people that's actually know Silver City, been here, grew up here, went to school here. That know, and won't, and she's, she wants the best for Silver City and has done well, the business looks great. But that's my, that's me.
Okay, we have three nominees uh to choose from, so I need someone to make a motion on
Do we do them individually, or uh can we do them individually?
Yes.
You can do it that way. See who the top voters are, or you can just make a motion and name the two you're proposing. I mean, I might be making a sound, just do them one at a time.
Well, he, Ms. Droftons are reading, mate.
I said, Liz Mooney. I said, the nomination for Liz Mooney to be appointed for a first term to the Downtown Advisory Committee.
It's been moved upon the second for Liz Mooney to be appointed to the Downtown Advisory Committee, let it be known by sign of my. All of those have the same right, hearing none, motion carries.
Well, then I would like to make a motion that you appoint Megan Smith to the Downtown Advisory Committee.
It's been moved upon a second that Liz, wait a minute. Megan Smith be appointed to the Downtown Adventure Committee, all in favor, let it be known by sign of my. All opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Alright. I think that was a majority so starting to voting on the other category.
And I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see a lot of interest because in the past we've not had that much interest, so so I would like to uh say to everyone that that put their name in, please don't stop. We would love to see other people interested. We've got so many different boards. And uh we'd like to see people still show interest and want to be on the board responsibility, because we need everyone's.
Yeah. Okay. Planning Board appointment.
Okay. Alrighty, on June the thirtieth twenty four, Ann Radcliffe's third term will expire, and she is eligible to serve a fourth term. There is a city limits alternate position available as well. And the following individuals have shown interest in serving. Robbie Davis of five forty nine Han Forest Job, Silver City, North Carolina, and Brenda Bullis of eight ten North Garden Avenue, Silver City, North Carolina. And then on June thirtieth twenty four, Linda Colpack Martindale's second term will expire, and she is eligible to serve a third term. So currently, we only have one vacancy, and that's the city limits alternate position. You have two people that have shown interest in serving there, and the city limits person, Ann Radcliffe, again, she, her third term is expiring, but she is eligible to serve a fourth term and is interested in continuing to serve. And Linda Colpack, Colpack Martindale's second term will expire, and she is eligible for a third term. She is the ETJ member. So tonight, I need three motions from you. I need to appoint a city limits alternate member from the two. Appoint Linda Colpack Martindale for the third term, and Ann Radcliffe for the fourth term, and the motions are at the bottom.
Tiffany, I have a question. So what can you tell us about Robbie Davis and Brenda Bullis?
So um Robbie Davis, he was the manager of Foodline for several years. He graduated from Chatham Central High School. He lives over in the country club and in the city limits portion. Um he actually lives near some of the easements um for the sewer line. Um
Did he marry Georgia Truck and stuff?
And then Brenda Bullis, um she was um, she's a hairdresser, and she goes to Pine Grove Church. And you would know her, do you know, do you know her, Norma? Brenda Bullis.
I always call her Jean.
Yeah, yeah, Jane Bullis. Brenda Jane. They have actually, ma'am, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's hard to make a decision because we just don't.
I think they'll get the copies of the applications. It's some information that I don't think that is public record that's on some of them, and we learned that in the class.
Do they put references on there though? That would be the only thing we could use to exercise.
So is Ron Dameron, Dameron not, you see, the one that we're replacing?
No, Ron Dameron's the ETJ alternate.
Who are we replacing?
We are not replacing anyone. We're adding to the uh city limits alternate position and.
Putting people's addresses on.
So let's arrange our board in this matter.
Well, I make a motion that we extend Ann Radcliffe's uh third term. And when will that expire? Extended to, help me out here.
Twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven.
Second.
It's been moved upon the second that Ms. Radcliffe's uh term be expanded to on twenty twenty seven, all in favor by sign of my. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
I'd also like to make a motion that we extend Linda Colpack Martindale's term to twenty twenty seven.
It's been moved upon the second that we extend uh Ms. Martindale's term to twenty twenty seven. All in favor, let it be known by sign of my. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Alternate member.
Yeah, for the city limits.
Well, I make a motion to bring the Bullis be appointed to the city limits alternate member to the town of Silver City's planning board with no term.
It's been moved upon the second that Ms. Bullis be appointed to the, as the alternate uh position for the city limits with no term, all in favor by sign of my. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Okay, now we have the airport advisory.
Airport Advisory Committee appointment. Go ahead, Ms.
Okay, so on June the thirtieth, twenty-four, Sam Hans' first term will expire. And Mr. Hans is eligible for a second term which will expire on June the thirtieth of twenty-seven. On June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, Tim Boris's second term will expire, leaving a vacancy on the Airport Advisory Committee. Tim Boris can be determined eligible for a third term per the Town of Salar City Advisory Board and Committee Policy, page six, adopted by the Salar City Board of Commissioners on August the twenty-first of twenty-three. So where are current about that's that states her datum, what our policy says, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read, read everything to you. But what you can do is, let's see. You can see, you can deter determine if Tim Boris meets the requirements for a third term. So if you can, when you can bring the circumstances of an individual's service to the community to be of such such notable importance as to warrant a continuation of service. And I've had no other applicants for the um Airport Advisory Committee. And I can say that Tim has been very vocal in the meetings and goes above and beyond um with the advisory board with new ideas.
And I did get an email from the Chair of that Airport Advisory Committee asking that we reappoint uh Mr. Boris's board. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to round late some times to a second term, which will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
It's been moved upon the second that Sam Hans be uh reappointed, appointed to this board for a second term. That all in favor by sign of ah. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Tim was eligible and he's one of the group, is that correct?
And it's been recommended by the Chair of that board.
I'll make.
No, go ahead.
I'll I'll make a motion. Tim Boris um. And with his term that will expire, I guess, twenty twenty-seven. Is that correct, Kim?
Yes, ma'am.
That's right. It's been moved upon second that Tim Boris be reappointed to the uh Airport Authority Commission. All in favor, let it be known by a sign of ah. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you, board. Managers report. Oh, I bet you the man, but I'm sorry, six point six.
Yes.
Fourteen, uh in the fiscal year twenty-three, uh the I a piece of fire equipment was ordered. There were the twenty fiscal year twenty-three P O. It did not get delivered until July. So the unspent funds at six thirty twenty-three rolled into fund balances, budget amendments taking them out to in order to fund that equipment that was delivered in July. Uh, the next budget amendment, uh there were uh unforeseen repairs on a fire truck. Uh, rather than let it idle for four months to realize those expenses in uh twenty-five fiscal year, went ahead and did the repairs on that. And then to the last budget amendment, uh is moving money from Planning Department to Town Managers Department to cover uh changes in salaries.
So the for fourteen, even though it was purchased in twenty-three, twenty-four, it wasn't delivered, which means we weren't.
Yeah, so uh it doesn't matter when you order something, it's when it is actually delivered and the service is rendered, yeah. That is when you recognize the expense.
Yes, thank you.
There is already three different motions.
We're all three separately.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the amount that we need to move for the sixteen?
Uh, for sixteen, it would be about uh thirty thousand.
It's if you look on page. On page sixty-seven.
Alright, you read. I I'll make a motion that we approve. Two oh two four point one for budget amendment for appropriating funds for fire equipment.
It's been moved upon the second that we amend the budget to uh procure the necessary fire equipment, all in favor by a sign of ah. All of those having the same right, hearing none, motion carries.
Also, would like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four point one five budget amendment for appropriating funds for fire vehicle repairs.
It's been moved upon the second that we appropriate the necessary funds uh in this budget amendment for bar department repairs, all in favor by a sign of ah. All of those having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Right, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four point one six budget amendment for appropriating funds for town managing, town manager department.
Second, that we move the necessary funds to appropriate for the shock come, shortfall in the town managers' budget. All in favor by a sign of ah. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Six point seven. Personnel, F L S A and compensation.
We're probably all gonna work on this memo together, John, Jack and myself. I'll let Jack start.
Thank you, Kim. Mayor. So this is something we identified uh a few weeks ago and started working on it. So it's basically the section nine of Article Three, the pay plan. The personal policy, it's called overtime and compensatory time pay provisions. Uh, we've we've been looking at it uh together as a group. We shared it with the directors uh about a week ago to get some buy-in to it and then we presented to the board a statement for their consideration. So on page sixty-nine, uh is that study, you've got uh two things to pay attention to. There is a straw through views. That means that we're gonna delete that section of the section nine and then and yellow or highlighted would be new language. And so that's pretty much what you see on page sixty-nine. There's a couple places there. But bottom line is, we're talking about non-exempt employees, uh providing them the opportunity to choose whether they want comp time or uh overtime, a time and a half. Uh, that that's the big part. And then um uh taking out some of those restrictions on deciding when people get overtime and downtime. But uh putting back to the folks, the individuals that are not exempt, letting them choose once a year. And they keep that for the entire year. It's like an upper enrollment period. And so the next year, if they want to switch to comp or overtime or give it, they may have a choice. Um, and I'll stop there and add and ask John or Kim if they have anything to add.
F L S A will say that you have to give someone an option out of these papers that says item elected to take our time.
I think that's a good move.
It's been said, it's been said up there.
You need a motion to approve. Okay, well, I'll make the motion to approve the staff recommendation to revise personnel policies, section nine, overtime, compensatory time.
It's been moved upon the second that we uh move to uh amend or change the policy for overtime and E time, uh compensation time running and overtime, all in favor by a sign of ah. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you.
Raleigh Street schedule.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, good to hear. It's a, uh attention just this past week, uh there's some interest in uh purchasing Carter Bank, so we put this together. Kim did some research to figure out how to sell property, so this is an opportunity for the board to consider putting Carter Bank up for sale. Um, and so um considering this resolution to authorize the advertisement. It's a sewer bid process, selling of the property one-on-one East Raleigh Street. And there's a couple of key dates there that that Kim is provided, July, June seventeenth is the day we adopt this resolution. June twenty-seventh and July fourth, we put it in the newspaper. Uh, July twenty-ninth, we receive an open bids here at City Hall. And August fifth, the board would consider uh awarding that ice bid. Ice responsive, responsible bid. Yeah, that's probably a good option too. And there is a um five percent bid bond.
There is some interest, uh outside interest, uh there's been gaining a little momentum, uh board, so this is probably our, one of our better options. So what is the board's pleasure in adopting this resolution?
I'm so glad to see that there have been persons purchasing that building, so I think our constituents would agree that that's the right thing to sell this, that this property.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you know, like you see on TV for someone selling a classic car, they have a minimum that has to be met. So are we going to s- say there's a certain amount that has to be met or we will not accept the bid?
When we're talking about that as staff, I think you possibly could, but I think we could put this out for bidding if there was not a bid amount you would have did send.
Then you wouldn't have to say. Okay, I didn't know what they would say, yes.
You would have had to accept the bid, but you would not sell the property. Like you could project, you could define it, but you would have to accept them.
You said the bid, but we would decline. To sell it to them.
And also, um, what makes it a little bit trickier when you do set a starting point? There can be upset bids and so the upset bids, then you have to turn around and we have to come back and we have to advertise again. So the board could end up doing five to ten different resolutions if it got into a bidding war. And it could take, you know, six, six months longer, you know, so.
His original purchase price, was it a hundred thousand dollars? And we're okay with the water account being active in the future by not having an issue utilizing the water services?
I checked with uh Chris and here's the deal with that building. The consumption cannot differ. Whenever it was using fire. Uh, like you can't go in and make a restaurant out of it. It's gonna add to it, so yes, to answer your question.
Don't make sure it can be active. Or is it already active now because the town?
It's not turned off.
They closed on it in June of twenty twenty-two. That was post-mortuary, so it shouldn't be an issue anyway following that time.
You know, so even if they closed the town, it it still meant that.
I need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing advertisement for sealed bids for the sale of certain property located at one-on-one East Raleigh Street, Salar City, North Carolina, with parcel ID one five two five four.
It's been moved upon the second that the corner be building uh, the advertised to sell, all in favor by a sign of ah. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Managers report.
Couple of founders, uh things I want to share, Mayor. I think this uh Wednesday, this Wednesday, it's June, it's our holiday. I think I mentioned that. City Hall big buzz and it always be. It's certainly June forty, uh eight thirty-eight, there's EDC board meeting, uh I'll be attending the mayor's phone call as well. I think it's a meeting. A virtual meeting. Saturday, June one second, ten thirty, Jamesburg Chief of Being Event. Thursday, July fourth, is a town holiday. You know, I want to mention that because we won't have a meeting, possibly won't have a meeting before then, so. But it'll be no holiday. It's a Thursday, middle of the week. And then Monday, July fifteenth, looks like some next meeting. Uh, and I mentioned that for another reason, um Tim Mack, our planning director, is scheduling a public hearing at night for our comprehensive language plan to be considered. Uh, so public comments be welcome and a real decision can be made that evening at the office as well, so you've had that opportunity. That's why I'm here. You might answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. I'm attorney support.
Don't have anything to add, Mayor.
Alright, anything coming from the board uh before we move any further?
Yeah, I have, I have a question or maybe just a point of clarity, maybe um. And preparation for this meeting and then reviewing the minutes from last meeting and budget. I I think I was, I was a little um uh was admittedly a bit confused because I didn't realize that we had voted to defund the second position. And I was just curious, and not saying it didn't happen, but just curious if we had discussion about that before that came up for vote at the last meeting.
Yes.
We did.
Yes. Uh, and and, you know, the way, the the thing about this recording is you can go back and listen to it. And hear everything that was said and done at the meetings and so. Uh, but this, this was fully vetted and discussed and talked about in that meeting.
In last, last week.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Do we have an appropriation for H R for the next fiscal year though?
No, we do not.
You do not?
No, we do not.
Is it not in our um best interest to have an H R even outsourced?
We have, we have a um H R.
Specialist.
Not a director.
No.
No.
Well, we have someone who can help us out with employing, like not asking the wrong questions basically when we screen, okay.
Yeah, and she's been during, she's been in the H R field for probably more than twenty-five years. She worked at Randolph Community College as well, as well as Ashford City Schools in H R. So she's very knowledgeable.
I think the confusion was that H R wouldn't exist at all, so that's good. Thank you for the clarity.
Well, we did move on, we did combine um the H R department with the administration department. You'll see that in the budget summary. And with the defunding of the um H R director position, that opened up the possibility for us to have the communications specialist as well as a um deputy town clerk, so.
So I know. Well, I mean, I guess we're gonna go into closed session.
Sure, surely, yes.
Okay, I have some more questions. I'll ask, I'll wait until then.
Okay, um, anybody else? Yes.
Uh, I've had a lot of people compliment the town.
Yeah.
On the way things are moving forward and looking well. And especially had a lot of people compliment. About how we're shaping up and look better. And I know we've had a lot of people involved in that, volunteers, town employees and everybody. And I would also like to say thank you so much for moving the point, John.
Okay, real quick, uh I guess I'll close it out with four hundred meters have been installed uh as of today, so that process is moving forward. Uh, we had a meeting with Robert Reese on last week, a representative from this area about more funding for water and sewer departments. And again, spinning back to Commissioner Bray. Work going on here and I hope that you see it and understand it. This team has hit the ground and they're working very hard to get things done and uh it it is starting to show. So the more that we can do, the more that we can work together. Uh, I'm gonna call Mr. Lamb here just off, just because uh he may just take, no, I'm, let me finish.
Mayor, mayor.
This is not a.
We have somebody that's not supposed to be joining our meeting.
Who is that? Cut him off.
Alright, we're good.
Yeah.
We had a stop.
Anyway, um, I'm, I'm, I'm using Mr. Lamb for one reason. And, and, and this is the buying from uh our city tree and the public. Uh, by a second government working together and uh, you know, so he, he's talked to some U S officers. Is where I'm going with this about Salar City and all along with uh some of our realtors. So we're getting a buying from everywhere and I just wanted to let everybody know we appreciate it. And let you guys know what you may not know uh that is going on in this town of Salar City. So I just want to thank everybody for all that hard work and the things that they are doing to help us accomplish what we need to.
You say U S Congressman, do you mean Washington or you mean the state house?
Wash.
Washington. Both senators and their chiefs of staff are trying to work with me to see if we can get something into the federal budget. It's worth a shot.
Yeah.
Sure is.
So, you know. I, again, climate and government working together for the best of what's good for the citizens of Salar City.
Y'all are doing a great job.
Well, I respect that. I did anyway. Alright, that's all I have. Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to have a comment. So then I want to thank our police chief.
Yes.
For coming to our store, fragments in Salar City. Um, I had a, a issue, an issue or not an issue or whatever, that I wanted to discuss with him and had not had the opportunity to do so. So he came to us with two of his men on his force. And he forgave me when I called him by the wrong name.
Yes, I have never said it and I looked around, I'm like, okay.
You laughed.
Yes, I did. But thank you for those comments because we uh, the, the team's working. The team is working. Okay, let's get a motion.
Alright. In accordance with North Carolina general statute one forty three, three eighteen, eleven, A five. I make a motion to go into closed session.
It's been moved in probably second, uh, according to the North Carolina statute that we go into closed session, this time all in favor. Uh, all opposed, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you guys for coming out. Thank you for your support.